I mean at ten, I chess. Now let's return Guam's code to order. Good afternoon, senators. Thank you very much for coming in this afternoon. On your desk should be the engrossed copies of all of the bills. So we're on the voting file. If I can ask the clerk to please read the first bill, number 253-33.
Bill number 253-33 COR, as amended by the sponsor and substituted on the floor. Introduced by T. Ciata, an act to amend section 1, J2 of chapter 5 of Public Law 33-66 relative to the carryover of fiscal year 2015 and fiscal year 2014, appropriations for the Department of Public Works.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Good afternoon. Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, nay. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Nay. Bill number 253-33 received 15 yea votes and 2 nay votes. Bill number 253-33 is duly passed. I'm sorry.
Do we have two more numbers?
No, two. Thirteen, I said, thirteen. Thirteen aye votes and two nay votes. Bill number 253-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 264-33 LS.
Bill number 264-33 LS, as substituted by the sponsor and amended on the floor. Introduced by Tommy Morrison, V. Anthony Ada, T.R. Munia Barnes, R.J. Rispisho, Frank B. Uggan Jr., Brant T. McCready, Frank F. Blas Jr., Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Mary Camacho Torres, Judith T. Wampat, EDD. An act to amend sections 686-02 and 686-05 of Article 6, Chapter 68, Division 2, Title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Southern Development Master Plan.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill number 264 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 264 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 273-33 COR.
Bill number 273-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs and Procurement, and substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by T. Ciata, an act to amend sections 2 and 3 of Public Law 28-101 relative to the land exchange between government of Guam and the owner of lot number 5400 R6, municipality of Manila, for the Department of Corrections' protective zone.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill number 273 received 15 yea votes. Bill number 273 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 277-33 COR.
Bill number 277-33 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security and Senior Citizens, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., T. Ciata, R.J. Rispisho, V. Anthony Ada, Tommy Morrison, N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., Judith T. Wampat, EDD. An act to add a new chapter 68A to Division 2, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, relative to directing the Guam Economic Development Authority to develop and publish a request for information relative to how an interested contractor, hospital management team, or operator would transition from government operation of the Guam Memorial Hospital to a public-private partnership while continuing to provide quality hospital services accessible to all the people of Guam and the overall assessment of Guam's delivery of health care services.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, nay. Bill number 277 received 11 yea votes, 4 nay votes. Bill number 277-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 275-33 COR.
Bill number 275-33 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security and Senior Citizens, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., V. Anthony Ada, R.J. Rispisho, Judith T. Wampat, EDD, T.R. Munia Barnes. An act to amend subsection G of section 1515 I-2 and to add a new subsection 5 to section 1515... 12B of Article 5, Chapter 1 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Dock Facility and Shoreline Reinforcement Economic Enhancement Project and the completion of construction, repair, and improvements of the Guam Fishermen's Cooperative Association Facility.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, nay. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Bill number 275 received 12 yea votes and 3 nay votes. Bill number 275-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 279-33.
Bill number 279-33 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Rules, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform and Capital District, and amended on the floor. Introduced by N.B. Underwood, Ph.D., R.J. Rispisho, V. Anthony Ada, Mary Camacho Torres, Frank F. Blas Jr. An act to add new sections 1122 and 1123 to chapter 1, a new subsection B to section 3102, and a new subsection 1 to section 3102C of chapter 3, and to amend section 2103C of chapter 2, sections 3108, 3110B, 3121F, 3123, 3124, 3126, and 3127, all of chapter 3 of chapter 9, and section 15402 of Article 4, Chapter 15, all of Title 3, Guam Code Annotated, relative to clarifying the Guam Election Code.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Bill number 279 received 14 yea votes and 1 nay vote. Bill number 279-33 is duly passed by this body. Resolution number 299-33.
Resolution number 299-33 COR, introduced by B.J.F. Cruz, relative to expressing Ilhias Laturen Guam's unequivocal support for H.R. 4345, cited as the National Community Service Improvement Act of 2015, to extend participation eligibility in national service programs to citizens of the Federated States of Micronesia, the Republic of the Marshall Islands, and the Republic of Palau who are admitted to the United States under the terms of the Applicable Nations Compact of Free Association with the United States as introduced in the United States House of Representatives by the Honorable Congresswoman Madeline Z. Bordalio of Guam and co-sponsored by Congresswoman Tulsi Gabbard of Hawaii and Congressman Gregorio Kilili C. Sablon of the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Resolution number 299 received 15 yea votes. Resolution number 299-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 160-33.
Bill number 160-33 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Historic Preservation, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Brant T. McCready, R.J. Rispisho, Frank F. Blas Jr. An act to add a new Article 9 to chapter 63, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Guam Ocean and Fisheries Conservation Act of 2015.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator... Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, nay. Senator Torres, pass. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Espaldon. Bill number one sixty received fourteen yea votes and one nay vote. Bill number one sixty dash thirty-three is duly passed by this body. On the nomination, we're not done yet, on the nomination of Peter S. Calvo to serve as the Executive Director of Civil Service Commission. Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Respecho. Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Uggan.
On the nomination of Peter S. Calvo, he received fifteen yea votes. Mr. Peter S. Calvo is duly confirmed by this body to serve as the Executive Director of Civil Service Commission. On the nomination of Robert A. Perron to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Can we get one more? Tom? Oh, okay, thank you. So, there are fifteen votes for the confirmation of Robert A. Perron, so he's duly then confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Richard P. Sablon to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Richard P. Sablon received unanimous support, and he's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Florida M. Sanchez to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Florida M. Sanchez received unanimous support, she is duly confirmed by this legislature. On the nomination of Ricardo C. Duñez to serve as a member of the A.B. Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors. Roll call. Oh, wait, member, member, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, I know, can I ask the body to recuse myself from voting, primarily because his daughter works in my office? Can I be recused?
I'm hoping with both of your employees.
No, don't forget, we did this the last time and...
But then Senator Torres should recuse herself too.
Well, me, because strictly...
(laughter)
Well, I told you, I told you why. Unless you want to force me to vote, then, you know, of course I don't mind.
No, I mean, if you're going to use that excuse to get yourself accused, then I can come up with an excuse why you should recuse.
I don't know why. Yeah. Yeah, you're right, that's the reason why, and you recused me from voting before. You're right, and I'm trying to be consistent here, the last time also was an employee and I, you recused me, this is an employee as well, you're right, so... So, please vote on my recusal, all in favor, please raise your hand to recuse me from voting.
If you want to recuse yourself, I'd...
I need eight votes.
For the rest of the term.
Thank you, thank you very much, Senators. So, on the nomination then of Ricardo C. Duñez, all in favor, please raise your hand. Absolutely. Mr. Ricardo C. Duñez received fourteen affirmation and one excuse, he's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of John D. Pica P. Feheren to serve as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. John D. Pica P. Feheren received unanimous support, and she's duly confirmed by this body. We've exhausted the list, Senators, thank you very much. Senator Respecho.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn, subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion, no objection, we will adjourn, subject to the call of the Speaker. We are adjourned.